Good evening. Welcome to school committee of Monday, February 8th. The start time is six o'clock. I'll read it to the record pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting. While MGL Chapter 30A subsection 18 in the paragraph Governor's Order concerning imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place with meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to greatest consent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate same despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 872-9075-8585, or at the joint meeting posted on the website with a passcode of 578079. Just want to just check in as well, too. I will do roll call. The superintendent is on her way. She's checking the weather. Mr. Knackioli?
Present.
Mr. Burke?
Present.
Mrs. Griffin?
Present.
And present remotely. And Mrs. Forbes. And Mrs. Forbes is not with us this evening. Our student first up this evening is our student representative report. It's Ashley McGon with us.
Sorry, Brandon, I'm thinking 6:30. How's your work?
Oh, we're in.
And I was saying, Justin, what's he calling me for? Oh, my God.
It's Ashley McGon with us. Ashley, yes.
Hello. Yes, I'm here. So for the past few weeks, Student Council has been working to get a virtual talent show together, and it will be posted on our social media on Thursday. And we have nine really fun acts that you wouldn't really see at a normal talent show that we have in person because they were video submissions. So people could take creative liberty with that. And we have a really good show that we're going to be sharing. And there will be voting for a winner, and the winner gets an Amazon Echo Dot. So we're really excited to do something fun that people can watch right before vacation, and we think it's a nice way to ease into the break. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Very good. All right. Our next order of business will be a special presentation. Last week, two weeks ago, we held our 2021-2022 school year calendar, and we'll hold a brief public forum this evening on that. In preparation for that, I will open up the floor for discussion. We did receive, and the school department, and thank you Helen for putting together, a school calendar survey. And of 150 staff surveyed, 116 report before Labor Day, 34 after Labor Day for first day of school. The students, 168 responses, 125 before Labor Day, 43 after Labor Day, and with 522 parental responses, 311 before Labor Day, 211 after Labor Day. Okay, so I thank you for that. So we had a total of 840 responses, and we did have a nice paragraph here in our packet, so thank you Helen for putting that together. I will open the floor. If anyone has called in and willing to speak at this public forum regarding the 2021-2022 school year calendar, please raise your hand and be identified. I'm mute. Board members, anyone also want to speak on the subject? Okay. Mr. Knackioli?
Yeah, I don't want to speak on the subject because I agree with the all the results of before Labor Day. So that's where I'm leaning. My question is, if we do approve this calendar, I brought up last meeting about entertaining the different start time at Barton to create a different tier of busing. So if we do accept this calendar tonight, can we revisit that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, you're voting on the calendar, so start and end times really are-
Well, the start and end times are at the bottom.
Are on the calendar, but those are determined through collective bargaining anyway, so we would have to come back.
Okay. Thank you. That was my question.
Thank you. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school calendar as printed with, and I'm just going to read according to quote, new teachers reporting August 26, 27, all staff August 30, 31, grades 1 through 12 will start on Wednesday, the 1st, and kindergarten will start on Wednesday, September 2nd.
I'll make that one.
Have a motion on floor. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Second that motion. Discussion. There being none. Roll call vote. Mr. Knackioli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
And also vote yes as well, let the record show, four in affirmative and one absent, and the school calendar has been approved. And with the start dates as requested by Mr. Knackioli, will be investigated further. Okay. Our next order of business we did receive in our packets from Mr. Nugent, High School Principal, the program of studies. Mr. Nugent, are you with us this evening?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, thank you. This packet, thank you for doing, putting that together. We did have a chance to review it, and it's rather lengthy, as obviously program of studies are, and there are the purple atoms we added, the blue we took out. You want to give us a 45-second overview of where the vision and where we're going with this?
I can try to do it quickly in 45 seconds. So yes, you would know that in the, the purple is added and the blue is removed. I kind of went with those colors because I thought we would like a nice change from red, green, yellow, and gray. So the first real big addition is we added on page four, the vision of the graduate that we've talked about, you know, at length. So that's just, you know, time for that to get in. That's our first step of bringing the vision of graduate to life. On page seven, real quickly, at the bottom of the graduation requirement chart, next to the double asterix, we added that students with a documented language-based learning disability may have their world language requirement waived by their educational team. We just wanted to make sure we covered all our bases with our foreign language requirement. The next set of changes on pages 22, 23, and 24, we've organized the electives that we offer at Oxford High School into career pathways to kind of help the students and parents better choose their electives to match their core courses in any career interest or college major interest that they might have. But the U.S. Department of Education, there's 16, we thought that was kind of daunting to look through, so we organized those 16 into four, Humanities, Education, and Communication, Business, Finance, Law, Health and Social Services, and then Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math. It is our goal next year to also offer the eighth graders at least one elective in each of those career pathways, so they can have an understanding of the electives that will be available to them at Oxford High School. Page 25 kind of provides a newer, we're taking 26 out, we're adding 25, kind of updates the academic and career pathways that students will take at Oxford High School. I added, when this Truax and I were reviewing older programs of studies, we found one that had actual student work in there for the icons at the beginning of each department. So we thought it was important to put, you know, stat student work back in each department that's there. So a lot of the electives that are in blue, most of them were created, offered by teachers that are no longer in the district. So those electives that are in blue have not been offered for quite a while. So we kind of wanted to streamline the program of study, so it's again, not daunting with, you know, I want to take this, oh, we don't offer it anymore. So what's going to be in the program of studies once approved is just the courses and the electives that will be offered to the students next year. On page 35, we have moved the Sports and American Life elective from history to English. One of our newer English teachers have been teaching it for the past couple of years, and that has done a great job. Last year, we moved theater over to the English department, so we're going to take out theater basics and keep theater performance. On page 48, Mrs. Monette has really done a great job redesigning the ecology and environmental sciences to make them lab sciences. She feels that ecology would be a good prerequisite for environmental science, so we added that. AP Labs also, we're going to incorporate them within the classroom. On page 26, page 56, I apologize, when I was last year presenting the budget, we had talked about foreign language and the possibility about nixing French. Mrs. Bell Humor did me a huge favor in her busy schedule and actually helped me with a straw poll of the seventh graders. And actually, 25 seventh graders feel that they want to try French. So my suggestion is that we leave French in there, at least for next year. We do have the caveat saying if we don't have enough students to take it, we don't have to run it, but with 25, that's a solid class to take. One definite thing we will do for French is French III. If students want to go past the two-year requirement, they can take French III on as through edgenuity. Page 57, we thought we'd try Latin, but that never really took off. So again, if a student finishes their two-year requirement, if they, as a junior or senior, they want to take another foreign language through edgenuity, they are available to do that. The Visual Arts Department kind of reorganized their program. Instead of Art 1, 2, 3, and 4, they have an introduction to art, they have an introduction to digital design, they have an introduction to digital photography, where after that, they can take Art Studio or Digital Studio. And those are project-based classes that they can take multiple times. And students who are applying to art school, they present projects as well. So it's not a redundant course that they could take throughout, and those courses will lead students to the two AP art courses if they so desire. This year, we have continued with early college. We're in our second year with that. We'd like to continue with that. Because of the pandemic, QCC had changed their requirements. I had a conversation with the gentleman on Friday. They're not quite sure if they're going to keep the new requirements, which kind of gives us a little more say in the students that can join, or if they're going to go back to the old requirement, which includes having to go on their campus to take the Accuplacer. So I kind of left that open down the bottom on that page, on page 73. Again, page 75 and 76, real quick, Project Success and ACE weren't represented in there, so we added some descriptions of those programs. So a little over 45 seconds, but as quickly as possible. So any questions for myself and Mr. Truax, we are available. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nugent. That was very, very informative. Committee members, questions about the program of studies? Mr. Knackioli, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Dave. Really well done. So all the classes in blue, you said, have been kind of taken out, or a lot of those just unfilled classes, it sounds like, over the years, that just kind of weren't filled by students? Is that what you were saying?
Yes, and when the eighth grade first came over and the eighth period schedule came, you know, a lot of teachers, you know, volunteered all these courses, and like I said, these courses never ran, or those teachers are no longer with us.
Yeah, no, I think that was great to really condense it. Well done by your team. I just have a follow-up question. This is more with my principal hat on, because this is a discussion I've started, and I'm just wondering if you guys have ever had this discussion out here. You know, the whole grading system is a whole other conversation we could have at another day, but the 59 to 0 for an F really, really just gets to me. I mean, these are our struggling learners, and it's a 60-point range for failure. Have you guys ever talked about the grading system? Has that conversation ever come up in staff meetings or planning meetings? Have you guys ever had those discussions about looking to maybe figure out a way to not have that be so, such a large range? I know it's a discussion I've been having with my staff, my district. I'm just trying to figure out a way how to maximize the grading system a little bit differently. I'm just curious. It's all curiosity question.
So I mean, it was a bit of a shock to the teachers when the former principal changed it from 65 to 60, but are you looking for like another range within there?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the conversations ever come up, because I know, you know, like foreseeably with the way we do grading, and I'm not just saying you guys at the high school, this is universal, but you know, a kid could get like a 10, right, or a 25, and it's still an F, but really, how does a kid ever feel like they can pull themselves out of that? You know what I mean? Like, just from a numbers-wise, logistically, so like a scale of 100 to 50, you know, is something that I've really thrown around, I've been bouncing it off different people. And again, I'm just curious if the conversation ever came up with you guys.
So it actually did for first quarter. So what we used to do, what we called it a 50, where no student could get a 50. And there was some discussion on, well, you know, we're kind of rewarding them, that's quite a large amount of points. So Mr. Truax, back at his old school, they called it a pencil F. So a student on their first report got anything under a 60, under a 50, I think we decided, would be a pencil F. And so it gives the students a chance to work, you know, because once, yeah, if the grade is too low, they're going to figure out that there's no way they could pass the class. So with, especially this year, with a pencil F, the teacher will have the ability to work with them if they're really turning on second quarter, third quarter, and fourth quarter. So we do have the pencil F in there for first quarter.
That's good. You know, and I think part of it is like the mindset, too, like right there, like some of the teachers relate to you, well, we're giving it away. So if we really, if the bottom of the range was 50, then we're really not giving it away. You know what I mean? From 100 to 50, that's just, again, curiosity. I appreciate your feedback. It's just something that's really been weighing on me the last couple of years as a principal, just seeing like a 5 or a 15. It's just, it's just demoralizing, and kids really have a tough time pulling themselves out of it. I mean, mathematically, it's really a challenge to pull yourself out of it, so.
No, it is, especially this year. You're welcome.
And I appreciate the creativity that you guys are working on that, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I just have one question going through in the blue, in the blue and the deletions. I know, oh, in my tenure on this board, we spent, we spent some money on the wood shop and labs. So now that we are, looks like we're taking those out of the course of studies, how will those rooms be repurposed, the equipment? What's going to happen to the equipment? Again, with all the classes, I remember wood shop that we did have a quite an investment for.
Yeah, so, and Justin, if Dr. Nash, you could hop in if I'm mistaken. So we had our insurance company come in and do a quick survey, I think of all the buildings in the district, and they deemed in its current status that that wood shop is not safe. All that equipment down there is from the old high school, so, yeah, I mean, I know there are, you know, some supplies down there, but right now, the wood shop is not safe. As far as the computer labs, those are up and running with the new computers that we got, I think, two years ago. And the science labs are still, will be still running for the AP courses, they're just going to be incorporated into the classrooms themselves. So all those supplies will still be utilized.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Griffin? Okay, I entertain a motion to accept the 2021-2022 program of studies with changes as noted by Principal Nugent.
I'll make that one.
Have a motion on floor. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. I was just waiting for you, pal. You usually second them.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained, being none. Passes four in your firm. Thank you, Mr. Nugent, for your work, Mr. Truax, for your work on this.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next, we have minutes of January 25th meeting. If all were present, entertain a motion to approve the minutes of January 25th.
So moved. A seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussions, revisions, being none. Intain a motion to approve the minutes. We're all set, roll call, I mean, I'm sorry. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Record show, four in affirmative, one absent, and we are all set there. Going to finish the business. Okay, next up, we have information for polls, subcommittee study groups. Mr. May, Athletic Director Kevin May, are you available?
Yes, I am here.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you today?
Very good, thank you.
You know, so thank you for having me again, you know, as we, you know, travel through this unusual year in athletics. I had the opportunity to meet with the Board of Health once again last week. It was along with Dr. Nash, Mr. Truax, and Mr. Nugent, and they had come to the conclusion that it would be safe to move forward with the sports that would be, that the MIA had approved for fall, too. So I know some of it was included in your packet. So the fall, too, you know, as things, as kind of progressed through the year, football was moved there, as well as indoor track and volleyball and the fall cheer. So those four sports were the ones that we're looking to move forward with, you know, with our fall, too, season. You know, with the blessing, you know, of the Board of Health, we had made that decision to go ahead and move forward. There's still a lot of logistics to be determined. You know, as you can see, you know, within your packet, you know, there were modifications for each sport, but that is, you know, constantly changing, it seems. Earlier this afternoon, the EEA released another document as it pertains to sports, and, you know, we looked at, I looked at that briefly this afternoon and still looking to digest that, you know, some of the changes, the logistics as it takes place into, like things like venues and spectators along those lines. I think, you know, from a start date, you know, once the MIA did approve it, just towards the end of January, the district athletic committees had decided to weigh in as well as they always do, and a start date of, for practice of February 22nd was determined to allow them to come in, pick up equipment, start some conditioning. With that, for volleyball and cheer, a start date of March 1st was determined to start a little bit later with that. And then indoor track would have a start date of March 15th, you know, part of the district plan for our District 2 and even District 3, which are the two parts of the, with the old District E was, you know, the MIA kind of reorganized for this current school year, had determined that we would start later with the indoor track, look to possibly hold some outdoor meets in April at indoor distances, partly because of the lack of facilities in central Massachusetts to run these events safely. Still a lot to go through logistically and work out. I mean, pods have not been determined as of yet by the district, schedules and things like that, so I'm still waiting on word on that.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. May? Anything? Excellent. Thank you for your hard work on this, and I'm sure you'll keep us updated as plans, as they will change with modifications, and be able to roll and be very flexible and patient with things.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You as well.
All right. Mr. Packard is with us, and is Mr. Pelzarsky going to be with us tonight as well, too? They're talking about the kindergarten registration for 2021-2022 next year. Thank you, Mr. Packard.
Mr. P.
Yes, sir.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Pelzarsky is here as well. All right, go ahead, gentlemen.
So last year, I had worked with Mr. P to come up with some sort of like a kindergarten meet and greet or enrollment night, so to speak, to just help walk parents through the kindergarten enrollment process, especially because it's, for most parents, the first time they're sending a kid off to school. So instead of just having them walk in blind or calling me at all hours of the day saying, you know, what do I do? Just have like a one-stop shop for them to be able to do everything. Last year, that was cut short because of COVID. It was literally scheduled the week after everything shut down, so we weren't able to do anything, but this year, we are going to be doing one virtually. So I just wanted to make sure that it was put out there publicly for parents. I'd already sent out a couple of the notices that are in your packets to parents already, one of them being the kindergarten welcome letter that the Chaffey School puts out every year. And then the next one is my letter that I had sent out to parents with the meeting details and a description as to what the meeting is going to take, what's going to happen in the meeting. So Mr. P and I are here to answer any questions, if there are any, or to discuss kindergarten registration at all. Thank you. Just for the record.
This meeting will be held on Thursday, February 25th, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., is that correct?
Yep.
And registration will occur between March 1st and April 30th. Is that correct?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the enrollment period started much earlier this year and went on for much longer, just because there's so many ifs out there. Like, some parents have already reached out and said, I don't know what I'm doing with my kid next year for kindergarten, it's going to depend what the school year looks like, but what are my first steps to getting my kid enrolled? So I figured we'll get them all started early and discuss with parents the more we know later on.
Sure. Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
These are very well written, both these pieces here, and it could probably transform very quickly into a press release to the Webster Times, which is delivered to every household in Oxford, so it may give you a little more advertising on this.
Okay. Great idea. I will definitely look into that.
Thank you. Yeah, please, yeah. Okay, Mr. Knackioli, go ahead.
Yeah, also, yeah, this is really well done. It is so weird to look at the kindergarten class of 2034. Just looking at those dates is crazy in itself, but I also like the fact that it's going to be recorded, excuse me, recorded, and distributed to anyone who could not attend. Does that mean you're going to post it to our website, where just parents could go click on the, and see the, okay?
Yeah, that's my intention.
Yep, excellent. Well done.
And Mr. P also may want to talk about, you know, there were kindergarten students this year who chose not to enroll their children, so Mr. P has really done a nice job in reaching out to some of them to kind of see what was going on, to make, start those conversations as to appropriate placement of students. Mr. P, do you want to talk about that at all?
Yeah, it speaks to the whole matter of that we're just trying to get as many chances to talk to parents about, to put their minds at ease, because there's so many different variables, especially this year. Age is, of course, a factor, but kindergarten readiness is always a factor. Nick has done an amazing job of sending the parents my way. We did a survey. We've asked, you know, a lot of the homeschool parents who chose to homeschool this year, were they planning on coming back? So we're trying to just tackle all of those, so, and usually, it's just an information giving and taking and sharing out, and then trying to press, put the parents' minds at ease that, you know, whatever they decide, we can help them with and get them through the door and kind of break that down. It's, you know, you guys all remember what it was like that first year of kindergarten, even if it's your second child, it's still a lot of questions. So we're just hoping for as much information as we can get, so that's why we're excited. I have my lead teacher, Dendra Bodro, myself, and Nick on that call, and maybe some other teachers are going to join us as well, so we're excited.
I also suggest, too, welcoming back and make it very public to welcome back students that may be off to a private school because they did have full day, and that they would be welcomed with open arms back to Oxford Public Schools.
That was the audience we were tackling, yeah. We want to make sure they know there's still a seat ready for them, and we can make it as easy as possible to get them right back through the doors.
Perfect. Okay. Is there a community member posting right now? Put a question into the chat regarding this? So Pal is getting a message here.
I think it was regarding sports, and I don't know, obviously, we usually take questions from the community at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we'll hold it in then, okay.
But I just wanted to make you aware of it. They sounded like they were concerned, nobody was observing the chat, but we do have protocol for responding to questions from the community later.
Okay, very good, thank you. If you just make a note of that, and we can bring that up later into the meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay. Mr. Packard, Mr. Pelzarsky, anything more on this topic?
I'm all set.
Very good, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Next item, Mr. Burke, representing the superintendent's selection committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we did get a decent number of interested parties for the search committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we did get a decent number of interested parties for the search committee. And Mr. Knackioli and I met and went over those lists, and we have a list of recommendations for you in your packet tonight for the committee to look at, I believe we have to vote on. Am I correct with that?
That's correct, yes.
I don't, do I, you need me to read these out, or?
Please read.
Your recommendations into the record, and you put that in form of a motion that you would so move that.
Sure. So I'd like to make a motion that the following individuals be selected to the superintendent screening subcommittee. So the school committee members, which I believe we already voted on, were David Knackioli and Corey Burke, myself, for administration and central office, David Nugent and Helen Coffin. For faculty and support staff, Kimberly Davis, Jessica Tortison Allen and Justin Richards. For parents and guardians, Katie Proctor and Megan Rodeer. And a community member, Robert James Rassicott, and a high school student, Molly Raymond.
The motion or floor, they have a second for the motion.
Please second that motion.
Motion is seconded by Mrs. Griffin. Discussion. As Chair, I do want to thank the double-figure amount of individuals that did apply, put themselves out there, that they wanted to be recognized, wanted to be part of this. In my discussion with Mr. Knackioli about the process that was happening in selecting these eligible individuals, that he informed me that they tried to balance it by representation per school. So it's very hard, and I know how to say no to a volunteer. So there was no rating or rubric scale that went against, oh, you're this one or this one. It was all to try to, try to balance by the school. So again, I thank everyone that applied, that applied for those slots. And it's always nice, you hate to have to say no, but they pared it down to 11, and I think we can feel we can go with these 11 people. Okay, any further discussion? Roll call vote to appoint these 11 members to the superintendent screening subcommittee. Mr. Knackioli.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Griffin.
Yes.
And Mr. Kuna votes yes for any affirmative, one absent. Thank you, and you'll be getting your appointment letter. Any further updates from the committee, Mr. Burke and Mr. Knackioli?
Just that for our next meeting, we should have our candidate profile ready to review and.
Thank you.
Build on.
Okay. Mr. Ladoo, you are next up, and we have the Student Transportation Bid Award, please.
Thank you, Mr. Kuna, members of the committee. As you may be aware, our current regular ed transportation contract ends at the end of this fiscal year. So we are looking for a new three-year contract beginning 7/1. Therefore, we went out to bid, as we're required to by law, over $50,000. We have to do an IFB. We went out in mid-December and opened the bids in January, January 11th. With that said, we, we received three bids, which is a little surprising as compared to prior, prior years. We received one from JP McCarthy and Sons out of the Brookfield area, Durham School Services, and First Student. The rule for award for the transportation bid is the, was the total amount for the, the base transportation requirements, which are elementary, middle school and high school. The school bus monitor, as we frequently have one school bus monitor on one single bus, price, prices for all late bus runs, and finally athletic transportation, which is usually wait time and a cost for mileage. So we went over the, the rule for award is whoever submitted the lowest total, total cost, price, price for everything. So with that, we received three bids. JP McCarthy submitted a bid, a total amount of $2,849,483.70. Durham came in at $2,737,391.65. And First Student came in as the lowest bidder, $2,700,968.80. And let me, let me remind you, this is the total for all services for over three years.
Mr. Ladoo, may I ask, may I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Are all three, are all three of the bidders are that of a legitimate business practice?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. They all operate in multiple districts.
In multiple districts in this area as well?
Yes.
So, so we could not discredit anyone based upon past performance or based upon not being a viable candidate?
You certainly could. The, we have to go to the most responsible and responsive bidder. So if you had a history of, that you could prove that this person should not be qualified to be placing a bid, I mean, you could go down that road.
But, but there's nothing in our records here. There's nothing in our records that, that would disqualify any of these.
None of, any of these three bidders, not for being non-responsible or anything like that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any board, anyone else's questions before he proceeds?
The current low bidder provides transportation in Dudley-Chelton.
Thank you. Yeah, so the current low bidder, First Student, as Dr. Nash said, Dudley-Chelton, they operate in multiple districts throughout Massachusetts, Connecticut, in this area. I believe Bay Path as well. We did do some reference checks on these individuals, just as I personally have not done business with First Student. We received positive feedback from the nine or so districts we spoke with. The only one concern, one district had issues with cameras, which I've experienced that myself with, with our current provider. So it's, I'd say it's not unusual. However, it is a requirement of the contract that they have working cameras. But I did want to mention that. So that was really the only feedback that I received. That was negative, we'll say. It was an issue with a camera. Again, that was one district. So with all that, I recommend that the school committee award the, the transportation contract for the next three years to First Student, as they were the lowest and most responsible bidder. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Take questions? I don't know. I'll call for more from Mr. Knackioli again.
Yeah, you kind of touched upon a little bit of my concern is, is, you know, we don't get to see what's actually in the contract, or maybe we can by request, but I definitely have concerns with about, you know, just the, the reviewing of the contract, whether it's yearly, making sure that cameras are working. I know as, as a principal in this district, other districts, it is an issue when you need that camera, all of a sudden it's not working, and, oh, yeah, we were fixing it. I just, is there something within these contracts that say, you know, every six months, we do a, we do a check of them, or they do a check of their own systems? Is there any like checks and balances to make sure that we're getting what we paid for, because that is part of the contract? So is there anything written in those, in this contract that talks about reviewing of protocols or, you know, you understand what I'm saying, right?
Yeah, certainly. Do we contractually obligate them to, to verify that everything is working periodically? I, I don't believe the language in the contract is that restrictive. I think it leaves it at, it must, must have working cameras. Period. And that's just off the top of my head. Is there anything periodic, like I said, periodic checks to make sure everything's working? No, it seems to be a, well, when we need that footage, that's, that's the true test. Is that a good?
Right, so is there anything on their end that they do a monthly, you know, they all do bus, they do bus inspections, they do, you know?
That is part normally of the routine that they should follow. But they are required to do inspections on a regular basis, and that would be from cameras to tires, to brakes, to everything else. Yeah.
Correct.
You know, some companies are more diligent about doing it, and others are not. You're exactly right. It usually happens in the time when you need the footage, and for some reason, that camera on that bus isn't working. So I think it's, it's always good to meet with them at the beginning of, you know, since we have a new potential to award this to a brand-new vendor, one that we have not had, I would suggest that probably Justin have a meeting with their, their manager for this area, and we go over some of those issues, some of those discussions, to make sure that we're all on the same page initially. Yes.
Again, it's one of those things, we require them to be working, and we would expect that to be the end result. How they go about doing that?
Right.
It's expected that they would, they're on internal.
To Dr. Nash's point, I mean, that's something I definitely would like to be able to, you know, you guys have a conversation whether internally, every couple of months, we just randomly, we ask for different bus videos to see if they're working and whatnot. But that definitely was a concern of mine when I was here, and, you know, and somewhat, you know, in other districts I've been in. Here's a second question, and this is just strictly, I don't know, so it'll be educational for me. Do we have an out clause in these contracts? So if we lock into a three-year contract, do we have, is there anything in the language of these contracts that say, you know, if, if they're not providing the service, or there's, or there's, you know, say we request videos, and, you know, we've requested six to 10 videos, and we're not getting them because the cameras are, do we have an out clause in these contracts?
That's a good question. Typically, they're required to give a performance bond, so, well, they are required to provide a performance bond once they're awarded the contract, which would pay for the first year. So if they were to go belly up and the company just dissolves, we at least have some protection so we can pay for somebody else to provide the services. So again, I guess it kind of depends on the scenario. That, that's worst-case scenario. If they are, you're frequently seeing that videos aren't working. I mean, the first step would be contact them and try to get to the bottom of it.
It would be deeper than that.
We typically wouldn't blow up the whole contract based on that. It would have to be.
No, that's what I'm saying. It's not a great example using the cameras. I'm talking, you know, you know, right, wrong or indifferent, we, we obviously have had a vendor now for several years in this district. We know what we were getting, we knew the people. I'm just, you know, if we come in with somebody, I was just curious if we have an out clause at some point within this contract, that's all. For, for something that could be, you know, a major issue, not just cameras not working repeatedly.
You know, I've read the contract a couple of times, and if I recall, there's, there's general language that provides that opportunity. Again, you would need to obviously go through some, probably some potential of giving the opportunities to correct actions. But if I remember correctly, there's somewhere at the beginning of that contract, there's that general language that allows you to, to make that attempt to potentially exit the contract, but you would obviously need to have had, you know, a pretty clear definable reasons and give someone an opportunity to be able to make those corrections and, and to document that. And over a period of time, that has not happened, unless it was such a serious infraction that it would violate some issue within that contract that is specifically stated. I mean, I can recall some around general maintenance, overall maintenance of buses over a period of time, but it was generally in contracts when I sat in the school committee. It was, you know, a series of two or three years of, of a company having a history of doing this, and then all of a sudden, you know, the, the district just decided, we, we can't continue this, it's a safety issue, so.
And just another follow-up to that, so within the contract, what, what is, is there any language in there that talks about the conditions of the buses that we get within that contract, that we get?
Yeah, the oldest, they can be a seven years, and that's when the life of the contract, so.
So we could foreseeably get buses that are from 2014, starting next school year?
Yes, they cannot be older than seven years, and I think there's a mileage requirement as well, but I just don't recall what the, what that is. Could certainly share a copy of the contract with you, I mean.
Yeah, I would love to be able to look at it, just, you know, and again, I, I don't want anyone to think I'm, whoever we get's going to be, you know, we're going to get to this point, it's just always been a curiosity question I've had.
Seven is pretty standard, five to seven. And, and then a lot of, some contracts will stipulate, as Justin said, I think we have a mileage also. I think that's the more important thing sometimes. And then some contracts also have something about maintenance, obviously. The nice part is when I did speak with the two gentlemen, the two vendors who were new bidders this year, one of the questions I just asked in the conversation when we were opening the bids was where they were warehoused. And I did not, at that time, didn't slip my memory, that First Student was in Dudley-Chelton, but they are housed in Dudley, so they're, you know, close by, they have a, so that's another good point, I think, too, with any vendor that you're dealing with, that you have proximity, if a bus breaks down, that you're not sending them 20 miles away to get another bus, and kids are waiting, so.
Excellent. Any further questions? They intend a motion to award the 2024 Regular Education Student Transportation Contract to First Student? My motion, you have a second?
Please second that motion.
Second that motion. Further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Knackioli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
And Mr. Kuna votes yes as well, for any affirmative, one absent, and that bid is awarded to First Student.
Thank you very much.
And I thank, thank the other two bidders for putting their packages together on that.
Chair, aside, if I could add, you remembered that we had budgeted a, an amount in our FY22 budget, and I think as Justin indicated, this bid represents about a $4,000 increase, so we were happy about that, that we were very close.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, Justin. Thank you. No, thank you.
Okay. Next item, Dr. Nash, you have a report for us, please.
Sure. Including in your packet this evening is NESDEX document that provides for you an enrollment projection report. This comes as part of you engaging their services in your superintendent search. So there was no charge for this. This is something that NESDEX has done for years for school districts, particularly if they're in building projects. I wanted to point out a few things that I think are important. This document includes a historical perspective, so it looks over what has happened over the past 10 to 15 years. It projects enrollment through the next 10 to 15 years. You have some additional data that talks about housing starts, to give you an idea of the potential for move-ins. And then, at the very end, you also will see what's happening in, in the states around us, including Massachusetts. So I want to make a few points about the historical data, which is provided for you in the first three pages. If you were to look at the first page, my comment to you would be, if you look over the last 10 years, 10-year period, that loss represents 536 students less. We started out in 2005 with 536 students, more than, than we had at the end of 2015. That loss represents about a 27% decline in student enrollment. One of the other things, too, that you have in that first page is historical percentage changes in enrollment. You can see that if you look at the 2021 year, this is really an anomaly that most districts have seen, something that was brought to light as many parents either decided not to enroll their students. And so that is, that's the impact that I think a lot of superintendents have talked about with respect to our October 1st numbers. I don't expect that 6.9% to hold. If you look back, the highest loss occurred during 2015, 16, when it was a 5% loss. Most of these have held steady, you know, in the 2%, plus range. If you look at the second page, this shows the historical projection, or historical, excuse me, enrollment over the last 11 years. Again, I would admit this year, again, I think it's an anomaly, we'll see that number go up of 1420. But if you look at the average loss over the 10-year, and not include this year, we average about a 43-student loss per year over the 10 years, beginning in 2010 to, through 2019. One year in particular, you almost, or at a, almost 100 students, and that was in 2014, that difference of loss between, between 14 and 15 is about 91 students. So don't know what that was about. You're averaging about 43 a year over that time period from 2010 to 2020. So what does projection enrollment look like? It, it certainly is not going to increase. If you look at this information, you can see that from 2021- can see that from 2021 to 2025, you're looking at, uh, decrease in enrollment, if you look at the graph that's at the bottom left, the projected enrollments in grade combinations, that's the very left, left graph, and if you look at your four schools represented in pre-K1, 2, 4, 5, 7, and 8, 12, and you were to just look at 2021 through 2025, that would be the next five years, you can see that in pre-K1, the projection is that you would lose 28 students in grades 2 through 4, 25 students, but when you get to the middle school and high school, you're going to see larger numbers, 107 at the middle school in those five years, and 84 fewer students at the high school, projected for the next five years. This obviously has an impact, it has an impact on staffing, uh, which is something that I think down the road, um, the committee may, uh, wish to consider, uh, but the projection is that you'll continue to lose, uh, 23% of your student body on the right-hand side, or 326 students, as you move through the next 10 years. So you could very well go from 1,420 again this year to a little, uh, little more than a, a thousand or around 1,100 students, so that's a, um, again, uh, those, this is a projection, uh, based on a, a lot of, um, data, uh, certainly they look at things like housing starts, uh, there's a page in here that they look at birth to kindergarten, they look at birth rates, and see what's happening in the town, and you can see, uh, there's a page that includes your birth-to-kindergarten relationship, you had one, um, real spike, I don't know if that's linked to something that was going on in the world at that time, was there a blizzard, or, or something, uh, but you see that spike, and then it stayed somewhat consistent, but then it, it goes down, so you can start to see that trend, uh, fewer babies are being born, and thus fewer students who are sitting in, in seats. Again, the additional data that includes building permits issued, the number of permits back in 2005 for single-family homes were around 47, and you can see that that has, um, dwindled extensively, uh, land availability, cost of building, uh, all kinds of things. Looking at multi-units, too, uh, that the community, uh, might, uh, have, uh, again, uh, limited number of multi-units in, uh, Oxford. And then I think the important piece on this page is to look at the number of students, uh, we're using 2020, uh, the number of students who are homeschooled this year, that number of 52 represents about, almost a doubling the number of students that we typically see, we're somewhere in the mid-20s on a typical year, and, uh, this doubled this year, so I would expect that, you know, half of those students would probably be back, given the, uh, changes hopefully in, uh, the vaccination and, and our pandemic, uh, and then the other piece that I think is interesting is to look at the number of students who have either gone to charter schools, magnet schools, or simply choiced out, that's 127, so if you add those two together, you're, you know, you're looking at 100, roughly 180 students, um, that were not here this year, some of which we, we understand, so I think, again, I would caution you that this year is, is an anomaly, as we all know, but, uh, the, the, the trend is downward in the state, uh, when you look, uh, at the last page, and you look at the trends in education in the state, you can see that, uh, Massachusetts, um, has seen a decline, uh, not as much as the other New England states, if you look at New Hampshire and you look at Connecticut, but, um, 2.6% decline in the state overall, uh, and this was based, uh, on old data, really, uh, 2016, so that's really old data, my hunch is that that has increased, um, since that date, it has not gotten better when I talk with, um, you know, area, um, superintendents, most of them will tell you that their numbers have continued to, to go down over the course of, um, each year, so. So that's, um, you know, kind of a profile of what expectations are, it certainly is something to have conversations about, depending on what happens, uh, with any kind of, uh, middle school project, and certainly in the future with any kind of reorganization in your school districts, um, in your buildings.
Thank you, Dr.
You're welcome.
Dr. Nash, anything further to say before us?
Uh, no, I'm all set.
Mr. Chair, could I just ask?
Go ahead.
Another question. So, I know this topic has come up, I don't, I can't recall if it's come up since I've been on the board much, or maybe I just don't recall, but have we, if we're losing 127 kids to charter or magnet, choiced out, um, and we're only taking six in, and I, I don't know if those six are choiced in for school choice under the current one that we had, uh, adopted, or is it through our special ed programs, but would you recommend us exploring school choice again, or where do you stand on that? I mean, if we, especially with the trend of these numbers going down and down each and each year?
So, as you know, school choice is a year-to-year vote, uh, it is based on, generally on open seats or enrollment, when you look at class size, we certainly, uh, will, you'll have that opportunity, I think in May, we'll make a recommendation, uh, based on what our numbers look like, but certainly, uh, districts, um, have done that, uh, school choice provides an opportunity for others to, again, explore your district, come to your district if they make that choice. The, uh, the amount of money, uh, that you get in return, um, certainly is not going to, uh, be equivalent to what the average would be to educate a student, so, uh, that's the caution that I always say, uh, we are fortunate that we do not use school choice money to balance our budget as other districts do, so we do not rely on it, I, I think if you have open seats and your enrollments are such, then school choice is, is a mechanism, is a way to do that, it's another way to afford opportunities for, for parents to make decisions about where they want to send their children. Uh, oftentimes, one of the difficulties is, when you start to, uh, only open up seats at your high school level, and you open them up at the upper grades, which unfortunately tends to be the case sometimes in districts, those students coming in now have to meet your requirements, and it's almost a penalty to that student, who comes in as a junior, to now have to meet the graduation requirements that your school committee has approved for them to graduate, and I've seen this happen in a couple of districts, and it's unfair. It seems to be that we don't want to open seats at our elementary schools, we have a little less, um, probably propensity against it at middle, and we definitely tend to want to open them at high school for some reason, uh, so, uh, again, I'm not saying that that's wrong, I'm just pointing out that when you open them at high school, you, unless you're opening them up at early in eighth grade, you're gonna, you're gonna have kids coming in and not being able to meet the requirements, but absolutely, uh, it's something that will be presented to you as potentially an option to consider, depending on what our enrollments look like, once we see that.
Thank you.
Yep.
All righty. Uh, at this stage, uh, Mrs. Griffin, you have a warrant report for us, please.
I do. So I have a warrant report for this evening, February 8th, 2021, I have, um, four warrants that I signed, an accounts payable warrant for February 2nd, 2021, for $167,180.37. I signed a food service warrant dated February 2nd, 2021, for $4,973.75, a payroll warrant dated February 4th, 2021, for $560,294.81, and accounts payable warrant dated February 9th, 2021, for $44,099.93, and that is all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And you may continue with your requests this evening, or comments.
Um, I have no real request, just one thing that came to mind while we had that, um, NezDex presentation on, um, on the statistics of our projected enrollment was, um, Orchard Hill and other building projects, I know that it was discussed that there was going to be some expansion and possibly, um, repurposing of the housing, and, um, I'm just not current in, on all of how that all worked out, and, um, I'm, I'm kind of curious of what happened, and if there's any thoughts about that impacting, um, you know, our projected enrollments, and I thought that there was something else about maybe other hous- housing developments proposed for Oxford, that would be on that larger scale, but, um, I feel like that was over a year or so ago that I heard some type of rumor about that, and again, I don't know if it came to fruition or not, so, I guess that's kind of questioned more for, um, the building, uh, department and, and whatnot, to kind of get an update from them about, you know, any projected big projects for our community, for housing, because, um, that would give me more insight as far as future enrollment projections. Sometimes I don't know if everything's really reflected in these, uh, NezDex reports, they might not have all the data that our town officials have. So.
Thank you.
And thanks to everybody for all their hard work, as always.
There you go. Mr. Burke, you're next.
Uh, just a question possibly for our next meeting, um, Dr. Nash, whether or not there's been any discussion, uh, with administration about possibility of bringing more students back into the buildings, uh, especially at the younger level, looking at possibility of following CDC recommendations of going to three feet and see if that conversation has started in Oxford yet.
We haven't yet because we're waiting for the CDC guidelines to come out, I think those are supposed to come out this week.
Yep.
Uh, also, the commissioner is, needs to release new guidelines on transportation, uh, changes in transportation, so I think, uh, the next question then would be, we would need to then, uh, probably sit down and revisit our MOA, uh, with our teachers, uh, with respect, at least have conversations about that, because the MOA, I believe, includes us in this, uh, hybrid model through the end of the school year, so, uh, I think all those places, you know, pieces need to kind of happen first, I think the first is to see what the CDC is recommending, and then, uh, what the commissioner, the commissioner has indicated, that probably this week, uh, as early as this week, we could see changes in transportation, my hunch is that they're going to come off of, obviously, the, uh, limit that we have now in the busing, and I would think that potentially we're going to see that in concert with some kinds of recommendations from CDC, however, having said that, I think you, some of you may have heard, um, CDC Commissioner Walensky, uh, Dr. Walensky talk about the fact that she strongly believed that school districts have mitigated, been able to mitigate, uh, the transmission, and that staff do not need, um, to have a vaccine, uh, to return, and then, uh, you'll hear some others say things a little bit different, or not be as forceful as she, and I think she also walked that back a little bit, so, you know, I, I think stay tuned, um, certainly, uh, we would want to be able to explore that as a, a possibility, uh, no question, kids belong in school, I would like to get as many kids back as we, we can in a safe manner, and that's the, the key, uh, to do it safely, and to, and will it be as safe is the big question at three feet, I mean, that's the unknown, is it going to be at safe, given the factors that other things may not be in place, i.e. the vaccine, uh, may not be available, uh, the governor talked today, and was asked today about whether or not, uh, when would those who are 65 be able to, uh, get the vaccine, no date is ready, and of course, we're up, educators are up after that, I believe, so, again, uh, we did a survey of our educators, uh, this past week, to see how many of our, um, employees, uh, would be interested, should we, uh, be able to, uh, work with some providers in the area, to make some arrangements so that we were able to provide it more as a clinic, and I think our number was around...
200 responses and 91%, which is 182.
Oh, yeah. Now, and that's of the roughly 300-plus employees, so, so, short answer, or short statement to a long response is, uh, yes, we, we certainly want to explore that, you know, and, and not, uh, not to, uh, put aside the fact that we, you know, we want safety to be the, the number-one priority of, for all, for staff and for students, and so if we can do it safely, we certainly are going to try to, to get students back in school before the end of the school year.
Thank you.
Mr. Knackioli?
First of all, we miss Mrs. Forbes tonight, because she does such a good job of capturing the meeting and covering all the points, and now we're kind of all put on the spot, but I want to echo what the chair said earlier, I want to thank all those, uh, who expressed interest on be, in being part of the superintendent's search committee, um, we really appreciate all the interest, uh, I'm still very honored to be one of the two school committee members, to be part of this very, very important decision for our district and be part of that team, so, just want to thank those who expressed interest, um, also, I haven't said this enough out here, um, but thank you to the parents and the guardians, the staff and the students, it, it is just, we've been in hybrid in my district for about a month now, you guys have been doing, we've been doing it out here for a long time, and it just, the, the efforts that it takes from all parties involved is monumental, um, so thank you to all the parents and guardians, the staff, um, that's everybody in every building, uh, the principals being a leader, I, I know everything you're going through each and every day, um, there's lots behind the scenes, I know it, and I just thank you, and, and I know sometimes, I'm just going to be blunt, I know sometimes you feel like we're not behind you, we're behind you, we're doing what's in the best interest of kids, and sometimes we ask too many questions, myself included, but that's what we're elected to do, has nothing to do with you all, we're just trying to do what's in the best interest of kids, so, thank you to all of you, and, and most importantly, the students, I, I just, I, I have daughters, uh, 15 and 13, I, I just, I, I try to wrap my head around every single day what these kids have had to go through since March, and it's just, the, the perseverance they have, the ability to change and adjust on the fly has just been, it's, it's amazing, all kids, so thank you to the students of the Oxford Public Schools for just going with the flow each and every day and making this work, so thank you all. That's it, Chair, thank you.
Thank you. Myself, I have nothing formal tonight, I'm just amazed, you know, we are, we are in the, that position right now, we're getting storms, and it looks like we're in a very active weather pattern this weekend, the superintendent was, um, you thought a few minutes late, she's out checking the weather and trying to figure out what the best plan of attack is for tomorrow, and it's such an easy thing, your parents say, whoa, okay, just keep the kids home, that's not what this is all about, this isn't just the easy buyout, oh, keep the kids home today, we're, we have our, our children, our students back in school for a reason, and for the educators coming in for the reason, and we're, we're going to see results, yes, it, it's hard, it's difficult, it's challenging, uh, for what I'm hearing back there, coming back to me, both in-person, the hybrid models, every model, I, I haven't heard a complaint yet, I've heard just the outstanding amount of the FaceTime, either maybe in the classroom or through the computer, and the dedication that our teachers are giving to each and every student, to make them feel just as special, if they're walking through the door, and no matter what grade level they are at, and that, that really is what it, what it was, teaching's all about, yes, you can get into your curriculum, but are you making connections with students, and that's what I'm hearing, so I want to thank the entire district, uh, Dr. Nash and the Snow Days, and also the custodial crew and DPW for making, we always get, I, I get complaints, oh, the, the parking lot wasn't standard, it wasn't this, but I, I think they do a really nice job walking this, walking tonight, it was very nice, this morning it may be a little more treacherous, but it's winter, it's in New England, you have to really expect it, okay. Just to wrap up, public comment, I think Nicholas, we had some, um, a few public comments tonight, is there anything, anyone else up there that would like to speak, I'll open the floor?
He has two comments in the chat, which I want to read them.
Yes, if you could, please, as he's coming up to read them, is anyone else out there that had, would have a comment, we did have two that come out of the chat, because your chat, it does not necessarily mean that we will respond, it's, you can, we will take it under advisement at the minimum.
All right, so two questions from a community member named Harry Stone, um, first one was about sports, he's wondering if we're... First one was about sports, he's wondering if we're really ready for football, and is just wondering if it would be smarter and safer to postpone all football-related sport stuff until next year. So, that was question number one. Question number two, he asked, will the town get any money back from the bus company for not using them during 2020? And so.
Okay, thank you. To Mr. Stone, I think I, I'll tackle the first one, and I'll leave the second one to, well, the superintendent. In terms of football and athletics, that, in the course and the minutes in this meeting, reflected that the collaborative decision was made within the Oxford Board of Health, with the MIAA, with the area's superintendent, principals, administration, and athletic director, to go forward with, with the regulation, with the regu, with the recommendation from MIAA. So, football will be happening, you saw our great Super Bowl yesterday, you saw many colleges, area high schools have gone through this, and there are protocols. And yes, it's not the most, it's not football season, but I think if everyone does their fair part, is, just like at school, it's part of school. And I have full confidence in the high school administration, coaching staff, and the students, players, and parents, that they can make this work. If not, it has to be evaluated. Okay? And with the, with the bus company question?
Do you want me to take that? So, if the response, the question was last year, we're talking about fiscal year FY '21.
He just said during 2020.
Right, right, so we did, we did receive, did not pay our bus company for services that were rendered when students were not in school. So, there was a period of time between March and the end of our fiscal year in June where we were able to retrieve money, as the school committee knows, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? That, I will close the floor. Okay, we'll be back here Monday, February 22nd, to all the students, parents, teachers, and members of the general community. Next week is school vacation, the kids will be out and about, enjoy the time off, be safe. I'll take a motion, adjourn.
I second that motion.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, and we are adjourned, thank you, have a great night.